Brad, how was Andrew Eason? Mark before you.
Nate Hancup, Operation New Success.
How was Maun Bynne, DNC Coordinator?
Patrick Bloomingdale County Administrator.
Kim Bolo, Douglas County Clerk's Office.
Pam Murphy County Administration.
Um, publicly, you can state your name if you want. If not, you don't have to.
Katherine Hall County Administration. I'm Nicole.
No, you don't have to. You're public. You think? Okay. You wanna tee it up?
Um, I do a horrible job of introducing people. So I'm gonna let you guys introduce yourselves.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, and I know Sean is wishing that Whitney was here instead of me because she works more closely with this, but you're having to work with the subject too. So, um, I'm Deb Mary. I'm the Executive Director of Midland's Mentoring Partnership and have been in that role for 10 years. And I'm here with...
Yes, I'm Emma Lenzolan, the Mentoring Services Manager at Midland's Mentoring Partnership, and I'm two months in.
Yeah. And one of the people that works with our YIAM project, and we are in the process of hiring another person. So looking for candidates, if anyone knows somebody who might be interested. We, so we're a backbone agency. We're not a direct service mentoring program. We're a backbone agency like OYS. We were started by Tom Osborne and Mike Annie in 1999 when they started their mentoring programs as a way for collaboration to happen. But it kind of turned into a coffee club because there wasn't any financial backing for the work they were doing. And so in 2009, Billings Bright Futures picked us up and helped, I know Ben Nelson and the city of Omaha and probably the county were involved in getting us some funding through the Office of Juvenile Justice and Linguistic Prevention in order to ramp up our activities and be more intentional. And I like to think of our work as, we're kind of disruptors. We have been in the business for the last 10 years of seeing what isn't working and what needs to be fixed. And I know anybody who's been involved in any sort of recovery program, you know the definition of insanity is to keep doing the same thing and expect different results. Well, we know that from our interviews, I'll tell you first, I had eight foster kids and I knew that I could not get a mentor for any of my foster kids because they would only provide a mentor if it was an adoptive home or a more permanent situation. And so, you know, that made no sense to me. And so when I, and that was before I got in this job. And then, when I got in the job, I was hearing from Kim Culp that, you know, they were placing, they were trying to place mentors to kids that had been touching the Jack. And I'd heard for 10 years, you know, they'd send referrals but couldn't get the match. And there, I was even seeing some of our mentoring programs, like, you know, they were saying that they were working with Jack. You remember some of this? And reporting in their annual reports that they were working with Jack, but all the people at Jack were telling me none of these kids are getting matched. And the other piece of information, you know, foster kids, juvenile justice kids, and then, you know, we collect data. Everybody who's doing formal mentoring in Omaha and has youth that they're mentoring through OPS, whether it's a school day program or not, is tagged in the system. And this is something that we've worked really hard to get accomplished. And so Omaha color schools can give me data on a lot of things that I need. And one of the things that they have told me in recent years is that if you look at any of our North Omaha schools, there isn't more than, you know, three to five youth in any of those schools that are being mentored with formal mentoring, which, you know, who's being mentored? You know, it's foster kids, it isn't juvenile justice kids, and it isn't kids in North Omaha schools. And so by putting a spotlight on these numbers and this information, you know, we've been able to come up with solutions and results because it's not like we have bad programs that don't want to serve these kids. Everybody, all our mentoring programs had legitimate reasons for why these audience weren't being served. And so we wanted to look at what changes could be made so that we could be serving these audiences, which in my opinion are the youth that need mentoring the most. And so we went about, just now narrowing the focus, we have some amazing programs in place that we're working with North Omaha schools. One of them is a project through My Brother's Keeper and the Obama Foundation on a national level. It's called Success Mentors. And we work with North Omaha schools with youth who are chronically abstinent. That's our focus, and that's had amazing results. The other project that we work on in North Omaha is, which we've been a partner with Willie Barney and the Empowerment Network for 10 years. It's the Village Zone Mentoring Project, which is intentionally to mentor all young men of color that live in the village zone, no matter what school they go to, which is 23 different schools. And the village zone is the highest crime, highest poverty section of Omaha. And as a matter of fact, we've had such great success. I'm really excited, and please don't tell anyone this, but, you know, with Willie Barney, we applied for a sizable grant to the Obama Foundation and out of like 150 applicants, we're one of 15 finalists. And I know Chris has been involved in that. Don't tell Willie I'm telling anyone. I take no credit for that except, because this is all Willie Barney and the Empowerment Network, but it is a project that we're really excited about. And, you know, because we've worked as an important partner with the Empowerment Network for so long, we were included in that project. But for 10 years, we've been hearing that we can't get these youths matched. So my first year being all, you know, wide-eyed and naive, I was like, oh, all we have to do, just let me help you. And so I was calling all these mentoring programs, and I couldn't get these youths matched either. And so we realized that we had some challenges before and needed to bring about some changes. About the same time, you know, I spend a lot of my time attending research conferences where everything we do is about evidence-based, you know, what works. We don't want to reinvent the wheel. We want to be respectful, of course, to all communities, but what is working in all communities? And so I attended a conference where I heard about a program that had been started with some youth that were in a residential facility. And it was called Youth Initiated Mentoring. And we'll tell you about that. But it had never been tried ever in the country in one-on-one, community-based mentoring like we wanted to do here in Omaha. And so we were the first to do that. And because of that, it's received tremendous attention nationally. It's been called game-changing for serving youth who have touched the juvenile justice system. And we've been, you know, we have copies of articles that have been in all sorts of scholarly journals about the work we're doing right here in Omaha with our Youth Initiated Mentoring. And so I'm gonna let Yasenia tell you a little bit about what Youth Initiated Mentoring is.
So Youth Initiative Mentoring is a unique model for us. Normally, what we call traditional mentoring is pairing up a young person with an adult that may have similar interests, that maybe live around the same area, and that's how they get matched. You get matched with someone that you really don't know and hope that you guys make, that that match makes a connection and that they stay involved in each other's lives for a little over a year, an entire year. With Youth Initiative Mentoring, the young person decides who they want their mentor to be. So when I meet with a young person, when we receive a referral from the Juvenile Assessment Center, I review the case. I get ahold of the family and I talk to them a little bit about the program and the difference between the traditional mentoring programs and Youth Initiative Mentoring. When I meet with them, they know that this is just another alternative, another program that they can get involved with. It's not mandatory. So often, I do make sure that they understand that piece, that this is not going to change the outcome of whatever consequences have been implemented. So they understand that. They, I talk to them about the program again. They fill out a, what do you call, this form that kind of helps them identify a couple of adults that they've dealt with in the past that they'd like to maybe get matched with. It could be a past teacher. It could be a counselor, a social worker, a cafeteria person that they connect with at their school, a coach, someone from their community. And so once they identify those two to three adults, I get in contact with those people or one of their first options and tell them a little about the program. I do often get adults that get flattered that have never considered mentoring before, that see this as an opportunity to get involved in this young person's life. So often, they say, yeah, I'd like to do it. Tell me more about it. I meet up with that adult, do an interview, see if they're able to commit for an entire year. If they do, then we pass along that match to one of our partner agencies that then oversees that match throughout the year. Again, often, young people understand that this is just another option. Hear from the young person and the parent in that child's life that they're excited to see what the outcome of the program is. Again, often, they identify adults that they've worked with in the past that had a connection, that they feel comfortable with, that at some point, they knew this young person before they got into some trouble or before they touched the juvenile justice system. So it's nice to see when an adult sees or hears from us and says, oh, wow, I've never considered myself being a mentor, but yeah, I'd like to tell me about it. And again, they often feel flattered to know that this young person saw them as a role model from, in whatever capacity they've worked with in the past. So that's a little bit about what I do. And it's been, we get probably referrals on a regular basis. And so I'm constantly working to try to get those mentors in the door. And that's, that's a little bit about that.
I have a minute to ask questions. If Yasenia, you'd like, she has some great stories. And she's like as much private detective as she is social worker. Finding these people is, it's a challenge. But, you know, the research is showing. And the researchers are the top mentoring researchers in the country. Jean Rhodes is kind of, you know, a common name in our field and out of Boston University. And they've sent, you know, their evaluators here. They've done quantitative and qualitative studies. And what we're learning is these juvenile justice youth, you know, they don't want to be mentored by somebody who comes from an entirely different background from them, who they don't know. You know, there isn't a bond. It's, you know, it doesn't always work with some of these higher-risk youth. But in this case, they know the person. They've made the decision that, you know, they like this person. The parents are more involved in the process. It's just more organic. A lot of times, it is more likely to be the same race or the same geographical neighborhood of town, or it's just more respectful of everyone. And the research shows there's just an immediate bond. So there isn't this six-months ramp up, get to know a stranger, you know? It's, and so we haven't got all the, this has only been the fourth year. The longitudinal studies aren't in, but we really believe this is going to show that this isn't about one year. It's about, you know, a lifelong commitment, you know, of having somebody there who's your safety net for the youth that we're talking about. So just a little bit more about my organization. And I forgot to mention that, you know, we were run by a board of directors. Our leadership is picked from, you know, the different sectors of our community that we need to help us make policy decisions. And so we do have quite a few people involved in, you know, the work that all of you are involved with, with juvenile justice youth. Greg Gonzalez, who, you know, Deputy Police Chief and runs the PACE program, is on our board. Judge Vernon Daniels has been on our board for quite a few years, very involved. Chris Rogers has been on our board for quite a few years. John Ewing, who is, you know, former Deputy Police Chief, very involved, and many others. But, you know, we have people that are involved in the systems that we want to try to change. So the other thing I want to say is, we're really grateful. I think we got $30,000 last year of community-based aid for this program. We are truly grateful for those dollars. The program cost us about $120,000 to run. And, but that amount of funding, I mean, I don't know that we'd be able to do it because I don't know that other funders would come on board if we didn't get some sort of stamp of approval that says, you know, we think this is important. So I don't think I need to tell you guys about mentoring. I mean, the research is so clear. It's such a low-cost, high-return on investment strategy. You know, we've done our own return on investment strategies, and it was an $8 return on investment for every $1. But, you know, a lot of those are, I think you can come up with what you want to. But, but the point is, you know, all the national research shows, if a youth has a mentor, especially if that youth has been traumatized in any way, if they've experienced any sort of toxic stress, that positive adult role model, just showing that they care, being a friend, makes all the difference. And their social emotional skills are going to be so much stronger, attendance in school, academic achievement, much less likely to be involved in risky behaviors, on and on and on. Now, we have worked hard with Ann Hoffs about what are we going to be measuring over the life? Because we want to show that we're reducing recidivism. But, you know, we've only got four years of data right now, so we can't tell that story. But we really believe that that's what we're going to be able to tell over time. Now, when Yasenia starts the project, she, or actually, before that, it's an important thing to know that the referrals come from the youth and the parents. We actually won't take anything that is required or demanded any youth. If it's judge-required, we won't take it because we know that that's just one more requirement this youth has and they don't have any control over it, any ownership, and it's going to fail. So if it's court-ordered, or Jack-ordered, or anybody-ordered, we won't do it. So it's all about whether that youth, and they're told that it isn't going to make a difference in their, you know, in the outcomes of anything. It doesn't help. And so then we show them this video, which, you know, it's about three minutes. I'd love to show it to you if you want to see it. Does anybody want to see it?
I do.
Do you? Okay.
I mean, I think three minutes is good.
Okay, okay. It's, you know, because this is what the youth watches and kind of decide if they want a mentor. So, let's see if I...
Yeah, it's always a little touchy.
Have you ever thought about what would be like to have a mentor? A mentor has the potential to act as a guide and your transition through life. All of us have had mentors to help us to get to where we are. Now think about the impacts a mentoring relationship can have on you and your life. A mentor is someone to help you sort out important situations, a responsible or caring friend, a role model, or patient listener. A mentor is not a counselor, a social worker, parent, disciplinarian, or an ATM or taxi service. Now, what if you could nominate who that mentor was? Maybe there's an adult from your past that you would like to reconnect with? Or maybe there's someone you currently connect with but have never thought of them as a mentor before now? Or even thought about asking them to be one? Youth Initiated Mentoring, or YIAM, allows you to do just that. It gives you the power to nominate the best mentor for you from a list of adults that have already been or are currently a part of your life. Don't worry, we'll help you determine who would make a great mentor.
A mentor is a person who sits there and helps you out and tries to get you through life.
Somebody that you can depend on to help you at any time if you need something. Somebody that understands.
There's struggles in my life that I've gone through or stressed me out. So I need, I want someone to help me out. I really don't have anybody, so I wanted one person, someone I could stick with, that would go the whole way with me.
Honestly, I feel better talking to somebody that's been through stuff and not try to yell at me and complain to me about what's wrong with, right? She sits there and talks to me as a friend would do.
The goals and stuff that I set for myself, he always, you know, go out of his way to make sure I get to them or reach them or link me up with people that can help me get there.
It feels good knowing that someone can understand you. It's not like they're on your side, but they know what you're going through and they're going to be there for you whether you make the wrong decisions and even the right decisions, they're going to be there for you.
Having a mentor means that you agree to connect with this person for at least four hours per month for a minimum of one year. You can also stay in touch via text, phone, or email in between the times that you meet. And although the commitment is only for one year, most of the mentoring relationships last for longer than the 12-month commitment. Over time, you can build a very strong emotional bond with your mentor. Does having a mentor interest you? Are you ready to empower yourself to achieve your goals by fully committing to four hours a month for a minimum of 12 months? If you think having a mentor is right for you, then there's a program waiting that can help. By joining an established mentoring program, you and your mentor will receive the following benefits: support from a trained staff person, free activity ideas, and help on how to build a relationship. Having a mentor will help provide you with the guidance and support that you need to be successful. So come join us and learn what mentoring is all about.
So, then, if the youth decides, then we, as Yasenia explained, we go into the home and we work with the youth and the parents and do asset mapping and find out who's been a positive role model in their life. Our hope is that we're going to come up with three names. And, you know, we were worried at first that youth were going to be, you know, naming people that, you know, weren't really positive role models. And we were just shocked that in four years, that's been so rare that, you know, it's hard to always come up with three names, but we usually get at least one. I know one of the people that's a YIAM mentor was Rodney, who works for you, and the youth met him at DCYC. And we were able to track him down and, you know, ask him because that youth just didn't feel like he had anybody else and he fell in bond with him while he was there. And we're shocked also that, you know, teachers, like, teachers are rarely going to sign up to be a mentor for somebody just randomly because they're around youth all day. But yet, when you go to a teacher, I mean, you're getting really positive results, right? I mean, it's rare that, because usually the teachers, you know, had kind of a bond or appreciation for that youth also. And also, they're flattered. And then there's this, you know, statement, that underlying statement that this youth really needs you and thinks you're important, you know? And so we've gotten janitors, former neighbors, former church people. I mean, you know, it's just so random, but it's people that wouldn't normally be signing up to be mentors. The money that we received from community-based aid, because I think when I started this, I mentioned we're not a mentoring program. So all, we do the hard work for the mentoring programs. We find the mentor and then we hand over, because there's so much more that goes into it. It needs to be case-managed on a monthly basis. It needs more thorough screening of that mentor. I mean, they all have to pass the background check based on our standards and go through some training. But then we also pay that mentoring program. In the past, it's been 500, well, it's changed over years. Right now, it's $500 a match that we hand off. So, you know, the mentoring programs are 100 Black Men, Girls Inc., Big Brother, Big Sister, Youth Emergency Services. There's a handful of them that are involved in this. And that's where the majority of the funding that we get for community-based aid is actually passed through to the mentoring programs, not to us. You know, the other piece of this that's important to know is that, you know, we've worked really hard to get referrals from everywhere. And like, we're working closely with Celia Creighton. She's sending us referrals at U-Turn. You know, we've received a lot from the Jack, which is where we really hope to get the most because we want to get them before they go further into racism. I know we're now getting some from DCYC. Is that your understanding? Okay. And probation has been sending referrals as well. The community-based aid funding only supports the youth that come from the Jack as referrals, but we want to take referrals from everywhere. So we've, you know, done our own fundraising to make sure that we can make that happen. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't quite read the website on that. Does it say video.com?
Oh, Vimeo.
And what's the number on that? Thank you.
And if you go to Vimeo, Midland's Mentoring Partnership, we have a whole bunch of them. But, like, so your caseworkers all have a copy of this, right? Well, our caseworkers don't, but if I, I don't want to cut into your presentation, but just to describe how it happens at the Juvenile Assessment Center. When youth come into the Juvenile Assessment Center for the assessment process, part of their assessment is on a computer where they're taking a behavioral health screen, which I'm going to talk about later. And after they take that behavioral health screen, they simply watch that video. And there's a piece of paper there and they're asked, are you interested in a mentor or not? And if they are, they put their email and phone number down. And then our specialists, when they bring the youth back in for their interview process, say, oh, I see that you marked that you wanted a mentor. Is this something you're interested in? I want to make sure that you realize that this doesn't affect our recommendation for diversion. And the youth says, oh, I thought that it would make me look better. No, I don't really want one. Or they say, no, I really want a mentor. And for those youth who really want a mentor, then we just pass that information along to Midland's Mentoring Partnership.
Any questions? I have a question. They say they don't want one. You get a court order for it anyway?
No, we, that's all the further it goes. It just, they were offered an opportunity, they didn't want it, so.
It won't be successful if they don't want it. But a lot of times, when I've done the YIAM interviews, you know, I think, you know, we kind of have to let them know, you know, this isn't somebody who's going to be nagging you. It's a friend. This isn't, you know, it's somebody, you know, sometimes, anyway. You know, the more they understand what it's not, you know, they're more likely to.
Yeah, the fact that they're identifying that adult themselves, they're making those decisions, I think they're more open to that idea and they know that adult already and they know they're going to be fun or they know they're, maybe in the past, they were a mentor but not, you know, in writing or kind of said. They were just there as a support system for them, so.
When you're done today, I would like to comment on that from my own experience.
Please.
When you're done.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? We've handed out an explanation of the YIAM program and information about some of the evaluation results. You know, we'd like to scale it larger, but we, you know, funding always limits that. It's, as far as the youth that are being served, you know, the ratio is 60% youth of color. It's more young ladies right now than boys. Is that right?
Actually, yeah.
Oh, is it the other way around? Oh, that's a bit better, okay. And, you know, it's still, anyway. Yes?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part. My question would be, how will this benefit county government?
How does this benefit county government? Well, it's, and the Juvenile Assessment Center's goal, is my understanding, is so that youth get some sort of support at that point so they're not coming back to the juvenile justice system again. And so having intervention supports at that point, you know, is, the goal is to stop, you know, to get them the help that they need so that they aren't going to be continuing to be involved.
So is this considered preventative or intervention?
It is both. I mean, we do mentoring as a preventative strategy and we started in third grade. But at this point in time, since they have touched the system, you know, it's considered false.
Brad, if you have any comments you want to make, you know, because of your closeness to the situation, you may want to say...
We've met before. They came out and talked. And I love it. I'm completely on board with what they're trying to do. I like the approach that they're taking in regards to, like you've mentioned, somebody that's not necessarily a stranger and having to get through sometimes several months to build some sort of a trust and a relationship, which I don't think any good happens until that happens. So, yeah, I don't know how much our kids are going to be able to be involved, but to the extent that they can be, I would certainly love for them to have that opportunity.
And we can have Yasenia come by and visit with all of our youth and share a little bit about, as an opportunity.
Yeah, I've heard that that's something we've done in the past and I think we can, we're certainly open to... Yeah, I've heard that that's something we've done in the past and I think we'd be absolutely open to the idea, I'd like to, yeah.
And when we're at full staff, I mean, one of our hopes is that we do have somebody kinda boots on the ground, either at the JAC or nearby, so that when somebody comes in, we can just talk to them directly and get it all done and save. I mean, we, the minute we hear from the caseworker, we try to make that phone call back to the family within forty-eight hours because we know that while that young person is sort of in the hot seat and it's time to really get them, you know, where they'll be more motivated to wanna, uh, have a support person.
Do you kinda look at the mentors to see that, hey, it's gonna be somebody that has some disciplines and you're not just picking me 'cause you know I'll be easy and whatever, it's okay?
Right.
Yeah, there is an interview process that we have the mentor, potential mentor go through, where we identify if they are, um, you know, someone that, that is going to commit, someone that's going to be there. There's, there's a couple of questions, like, you know, have you had a role model in your life before? And can you describe that person? And what do you see yourself, um, getting out of this experience? And what do you hope that that young person, um, is going to also gain from this experience? So there's a couple of questions that they have to answer. And then based on that, we kind of think, yeah, you're the right person or maybe this is in the right time for you. You've got a lot of things going on. And so, there are teachers sometimes that we reach out to that, you know, um, are already mentors to other students or coach after school and teach. And so they're like, "I'd love to, but this is not the right time for me," or...
Plus you gotta cook it by the ground.
Yeah, and then you gotta, you gotta do the background check. Sometimes they self-select, they're like, "Yeah, I don't think I wanna go through all that."
That's great, very good.
And every mentoring program, you know, that gets, uh, funds from us to monitor that match, whether it's the One Hundred Black Men or Girls Inc. or Big Brother, Big Sister, whoever, they also have their own screening and requirements. And they're a little bit different. And, and that's part of what we juggle too. Like, we know one agency might not take this youth, either because of age or their requirements or whatever the case is. And so for us, part of that dynamic is just finding the right mentoring program that will accept that youth.
You wanna continue with some of that you mentioned in your report, you wanna go ahead and share your...
Is, are, are these guys done? Sure. Yeah. Thank you for your time, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure, I'll go into the JAC, um, I have lots of paper today. Do I have to leave? No, okay, we'll stay.
For the whole time.
And I didn't do a headcount, if I, I apologize if I run out of copies, I don't know how many copies I have here. I don't have one.
Well, no, that's, yeah, I'll just...
And I'll get those to the clerk. So we'll start with just, uh, the typical JAC numbers that you're used to seeing here, which is the, uh, the form like this that has all of the data. And this is our, our annual snapshot for last year and then our third quarter of the fiscal year snapshot. So it's not the recent quarter that just ended Sunday, we have to have technical data for that. Um, just so you can see the data comparison, last year's quarter to this year's quarter, as well as our total numbers for last year. And I just wanna point out, usually this is a two-page document. The first page shows all the youth that are referred to the Juvenile Assessment Center for screening and assessment. Those are youth with law violations who the county attorney's office has sent to the JAC for screening and assessment and formal recommendations for further, um, processing through the system or diversion from the system. The second page are those youth who then went on diversion, as well as youth diverted from the system. At the bottom, you're seeing the warning letters, um, that were issued. Again, that's all via the county attorney's office. And then the Youth Impact refers to those youth who are duly involved in child welfare and juvenile justice. And that project is run through the Juvenile Assessment Center. And then you'll see the status referrals received, uh, after that. That's the, near the bottom of the second page. Those are parents calling the county attorney's office and asking for the court to take jurisdiction of their child for undevitable behavior. Youth are routed through the Juvenile Assessment Center for assessment and, uh, attempts to provide community-based services to those youth in lieu of court. And then the truancy referrals, i- is actually a school year breakdown. So you'll see the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year and then the seventeen, eighteen school year there, uh, data comparison. The next pages, um, have, are, are new to this committee. These are pages that we've now included. At the request of the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative Collaborative, a memo was released to all of the system partners and asked system partners to provide, um, their data also by geography, which is the zip code, information you see there, and the offenses. So if you see that third sheet of your packet, the juvenile outcomes by charges, I wanna make a point of the number there just so that everybody understands what the numbers there on the, the charges sheet. You see drug infraction, therefore referred is two hundred sixty-nine and one hundred ninety-nine. That means there were one hundred ninety-nine youth with two hundred sixty-nine separate charges. So for instance, I might have a charge of possession and an MIP or something like that. There's multiple charges per youth and so there, there's a, a breakdown in both youth totals there and charge totals for all of those things. And then again, the zip codes, um, there is a lot of zip codes. So that's, um, what we did was break down, not just the zip codes for youth referred to the Juvenile Asses- Assessment Center, but the zip code breakdown then for the youth progressing through the different, um... Whether they were assessed, whether they received a warning letter, went on diversion, successful or unsuccessful completion. What you do not see there, um, is what drives those recommendations. And that is the risk and need scores. So youth are progressed through the system based on their individual risk and need. So that's something that you're just not seeing reflected here. So it is a little difficult to make assumptions about all youth with this charge or all youth in that zip code. What's really important is to look at each individual youth and their own risk and needs. So again, data, it can be helpful and it can also be harmful if you make assumptions without the entire context. Um, any questions about the data? 'Cause I'd like to talk about the behavioral health, um, information that I handed out, that just single sheet. And so, yeah, just talking about just, yeah.
Do the truancy referrals all come from the county attorney?
The, right, we do all of the work of the truancy in our office. So all of the truancy referrals that go to the county attorney's office come to our office for the triaging of where those go. So when you see, Mark, that's a great point, and I won't go deep into truancy, but just to kinda give a little context of truancy. When you see that big number, uh... It's twelve hundred this last, yeah, twelve, twelve hundred this last school year. That doesn't mean twelve hundred kids are eligible to be diverted. Of that, there were nearly six hundred kids that, that, straight off the top, that truancy was nolley crossed. In other words, not pursued. And, uh, part of the reason for that, many of those youth are already on probation. So if the youth's already on probation, the school is sending a truancy referral, we certainly can't do a diversion on an already court-involved case. So, so that, that is indicative of the entire truancy batch, not those youth eligible for diversion. Thanks for asking that question. And that would be, if this group was interested in talking about truancy, then we would want to, to absolutely have the county attorneys and then go over the details of that. That's, uh, a lot, when you're talking about truancy. I'd like to really highlight something that I've talked about in here and, and you've heard before, but I wanted to bring a little bit of data, especially considering September was Suicide Prevention Month, and give you a little bit of indication of what we're seeing for youth who are exhibiting suicidal ideation and, and having reported suicide attempts. For those youth coming in, um, so you'll see here, when I mentioned the di- the behavioral health screening, that's called the Diagnostic Behavioral Health Screening, and it's a shortened version of the DISC. It was developed by the Center for Mental Health in Juvenile Justice at Columbia University. And we have been using this for, I think, nine years? I need to really look at that, but nearly a decade. And really, um, having some fantastic results because it really helps us target those behavioral health referrals. We used to use the MAZI too. There's nothing wrong with the MAZI too, but it's just such a brief instrument. It really shows anger issues, that's pretty broad. This instrument really helps us when we're making a referral to a therapist. Tell the therapist what are the issues that this child is exhibiting.
I'm sorry, what university was that in?
Columbia University. And so, there, there are actually seventeen diagnostic areas. And what you see here represents those around the emotional disturbance areas. So you can see that in the calendar year twenty seventeen, you can see the percentage and then the, the number of youth scoring possible or present in those areas. It's co- it's concerning. Kids coming, and, you know, I mean, you hear Mark and Brad talk about it all the time, kids in, in DCYC. Kids coming to the attention of the juvenile justice system are facing lots of different kinds of challenges of behavioral health. What we don't have and what we're working toward i- is doing some kind of basic trauma screening so that we can do better at making trauma-informed referrals to our local providers. What you see at the bottom are safety plans. So when a youth comes into our office and they state to the specialist, "I have had thoughts of harming myself, um, ending my life, I have attempted to end my life," then we do an intervention within the office where we bring in a second person. We have a behavioral health therapist in the office. And, um, either she or myself, um, who I'm also a trained counselor, enter the office and, and meet with that child and see what's the, what's the immediate risk today? Do they already have services and supports in place? Bring in the parent, do the same thing, a triaging of what's their level of need today. We have had a couple of kids who needed to go immediately to a manual, um, one a couple of weeks ago. And, um, we have a, a second layer of, if the youth does not have any existing therapist there, have been actively considering ending their life within a week, we do an immediate referral to a behavioral health, um, facility. Who can take that, who can take that, you do a more in-depth screening and set up another layer of safety plan and an immediate, um, plan for coming back for more appointments. So I wanted to, you know, point out at the bottom, what we added this year, and that's really as a result of our work through, many of you are familiar with the Kim Foundation and Region Six have a partnership where, where they're doing the, it's a suicide coalition, lots of partners, a lot of good work coming out of that and helpful, helpful guidance. And we've put in a sort of a second layer of acknowledgement. So we had a, a safety plan and we revamped our safety plan based on feedback from that group. And then we've also put in acknowledgement, because we have many kids who are coming in and expressing, "Yes, I have had active thoughts and they've been reset. However, I do have a therapist and I'm, I'm, I'm working on this actively with this therapist." And the parent also says, "Yes, I'm taking him and his next appointment is Tuesday." The therapist knows. And so we're, we're still having them sign an acknowledgement of that, but it's not as, as high a risk safety plan as a youth who's just their first time disclosing to us. So, yes.
I won't take long, I'm gonna leave for another meeting, but I do wanna impart something. I, I am a rather rough speaker and I apologize to everybody for that. But I'm gonna tell you, now that my grandson is nineteen, I can say some things that I couldn't say before because of privacy laws. In third grade, he started having problems. And everything you say here and talk about here is fine and dandy. But if people don't wanna listen because of privacy laws and various other things, to the people that know that child best, it's not gonna work. And we have a lot of problems that have not been solved. I've been as active as I could be since that third grade when problems really can't go ahead. And then the people running around doing good started telling us what to do, him what to do. But the people that were doing the analyzing, the assessments and everything else really didn't want input from the people that knew him. And as long as that's the case, you're not gonna be a success, so why spend the money? This is, I hope, for your benefit. And for my grandson, it's too late now for him, he's nineteen. And for a lot of kids, excuse me, please do, I'm gonna leave in a minute, don't get upset.
I'm trying to help you, who's your state senator?
Well, I'm not gonna disclose it, 'cause I haven't, I haven't talked to my daughter about that, okay? He's not in juvenile justice, but he is in the welfare system.
Listen, Larry, who's your state senator?
I'm sorry?
Who's your state senator?
Well, Burke Hard, okay?
Have you?
And I've been down there shooting my mouth off too, so let's don't get into that just yet.
Well, no.
And I know Mars would be fairly close, I've been shooting my mouth all the way up to the attorney's house. So please don't cross-examine me here, I wanna leave you with these words. That I too am interested in what you're interested in, but you said it yourself, grandparents are not a role model. Parents are not a role model. Excuse me. The guy out at Columbia University doesn't know Omaha. University of Nebraska gets a lot of money.
I'm sorry.
We have people here.
Yeah.
And, and I've been sitting, I've sat in on meetings with the therapists, et cetera. Even with the paper signed to be involved. They feel like they don't have to tell you anything and they really don't want the information. They know best, best practices, just like what you have here. But that is not always accurate because you don't know the youth like you think you do. Please, be more inclusive. We don't need everybody else out in the community telling us what to do and helping our youth. Help us to help the youth, okay?
So, before you go, Larry, I hear what you're saying and, um, I think that's fair. But since Burke's leaving, I think you need to talk with that person who's over there.
I, I've been through all that too. I'm saying, stop and listen to people like me. Privacy laws are a big problem there.
We agree with that. We're agreeing with you, Larry.
Yeah. But just because of privacy laws doesn't mean that people can't...
Right, we're agreeing.
Unless you don't need the input and you don't have to listen.
Right.
I don't recall exactly where it was, what's happening.
I think you're finished.
So when, so when you get this referral, does this, does this give feedback to the schools, to the schools? Let this kid's health status?
With the permission of the youth and family, yes. So part of our safety plan, it's a great question. Part of our safety planning is we identify people at, when they're at home. When they're not at home, when they're in school, we identify safe people that they can and will reach out to. And we also give the resource of Your Life, Your Voice from Boystown, which is based for youth to be calling and texting and messaging. It's a, it's an online resource and it's a phone app resource. So when we, when they give us a school person, we say to them very specifically, "Do you give permission for me to reach out to Mrs. Jones at the school to speak about this?" And the youth says yes or no. And the parent, when they come in for the parent portion, "Do you give permission, yes or no?" And if they both say yes, then we, part of our follow-up is reaching out to, you know, PS specifically, and I may have mentioned this at that school meeting, um, we reach out to that social worker and the SSL. If the person that they've mentioned is a teacher, that, that teacher specifically, it's, it's that school team and they have developed those new teams this year that are wrapping around the youth that involve the social worker, the SSL and the counselor.
Well, I, no, that, I mean, I'm just wondering, not just the teacher, but somehow. So if you, if this kid has died and all of this, does it show up on the health record somewhere? Because if that, 'cause most of these, 'cause some of the schools that these kids are at, they have school-based health plans.
Right.
And I'm assuming this is part of their portfolio, so if something happens, they know this kid has some, something that they need to work through and it's not just assumed the kid's acting out. Is that, is that...
No, the connection to giving them the diagnostic behavioral health information, we, we aren't providing that.
So it wouldn't be, if this would be like... So it wouldn't be, if this would be like?
Diagnosis, this is a, an indication that they likely would be diagnosed if they went to a psychologist. This is simply a screening to give us direction of where to refer them to behavioral health on those top two things. The suicidal, the, the self-harming information is where we're reaching out directly. And we reach out other ways too, but we're not providing this information to the schools, especially current.
Okay.
We are not doing that.
Help me work through this. I guess my question is, how, I see what you're saying, but at what point should a doc be connected with this? I mean, you don't wanna stigmatize the kid, but if you, I mean, I guess you need the grave situations you were referring to somewhere. But how do you, like, put it on the record to be able to work through? So if this, if this kid pops up with an issue in school, they know there may be something health-wise behind it, so it's not driven by that.
So.
I guess I'm trying, how do you mentally help wise connect the dots without giving the kid a stick? I mean, there should be some way to keep it quiet underneath the ring.
Right, without giving the behavioral health information. What we do with the schools, if the parent and youth sign the release of information, we have a specific release of information for school. If they sign it, which most do.
But only if they sign it.
I cannot, I can't tell you the last time an O P S parent didn't sign it. There are some smaller districts who have had issues with their children being removed from extracurriculars, so they will not sign it. But for the most part, parents are signing that. And so we have worked with O P S, S I S, their Information Services Division. And they have put dropped, a drop-down menu in their system that social workers, S S Ls and S R Os, as well as administrators, regular classroom teachers can't. But all of those levels of folks can see when a youth is on diversion. And it's the same with probation, they have a probation dropdown. So we've all worked together on this collaborative for many years. So if an S R O has, has a, a young lady in his office and she's having some issues, he can hop in there and say, you know what, she has a diversion officer. And they can and do call over and say, I have Suzie in the office, who's working with Suzie. Crystal, okay, get Crystal on the phone, do we need to, we need to have a, a meeting? That, that is happening. We're just not giving this level of detailed behavioral health information, just.
And those are those people in the room where they did it, O P S, we've got social workers.
Right, right.
I have one question, and Sean, the way you laid out all the previous stuff, you had it broken down by race and also by zip code. Do you have the same information here? The reason I raise that, it also alludes to Commissioner Rogers' point a little bit is there could be some public policy changes or issues if we got a major trend or something coming. I heard what you just said, but my point is, with the drilling down of that help in the long-term situation, have to address some of these issues.
Ajmal, every bit of information you see in these meetings, we have an ability to drill down and probably already have drilled down, but we don't wanna bring reams of paper into the room every time. We have the ability to look into that for any conversation that can help with policy, practice or otherwise.
Thank you.
We were in front of the county board on Tuesday, so we'll just cover some of the other stuff. Today, we've got ninety, uh, seventy-four kids at the youth center, twenty-three on the home program. Six of our students have earned their diplomas this year. On track to be eleven, so hopefully we'll exceed that. Do you wanna talk a little bit about the parent-teacher conference?
Yes, we've changed our parent-teacher conferences where, rather than just having a, a couple of segmented times, we now have times during the day and during the evenings when there's actual visitation. So parents don't have to come out twice to get the information. It's a little bit more of a commitment from our teachers because they have to be available in the evening as well. But they, they gladly do it. And, and the results have been good. The first time, we had thirty-two parents that came where before we were flirting with, between ten and fifteen. And we had twenty-eight that came this, this past week. And we're really pleased, really pleased. That seems to work out a lot better and the parents really appreciate not having to come out the extra time.
We did our career fair, I've mentioned a couple of times, but it actually happened on September twenty-first. And we had fourteen different groups come through and have an opportunity to spend some time with the kids and giving the kids an idea of what it might be like to go through an application process and if nothing else, maybe exposing them to some opportunities that they may not otherwise consider. And like Sean, we're just getting our September numbers together. I know that we average seventy-seven kids for the month of November, but I don't have the link to stay information quite yet.
Me, September?
November.
Brad, do you think it would've been about the same a year ago? Numbers something like that, I'm just curious.
If you, the average for the calendar year twenty eighteen continues to be eighty-one, the average daily population for the calendar year twenty seventeen was eighty-two.
Okay, just wondering.
And again, I don't have all the information for September as regarding length of stay, but our average through the end of August was fifty. And probation in August specifically, their average length of stay was forty. Excuse me, not on probation, juveniles, not on probation was forty, probation was twenty-seven. Adult court was one thirty-seven. Continues to really drive that number. And overall, we were at fifty-six. Commissioner Kraft, and I didn't have this part of my presentation, but he had emailed and asked if we could come up with a median length of stay, so in the middle half or more and half or less. And that was, in fact, there was one year that we were actually seven. But I, I don't know that that's going to help us a whole lot because I think everybody else is looking at it as an average length of stay. So my concern is that might artificially make us appear better.
Sure it wasn't seven point three nine two five zero?
Mark and I both, our degrees are in math and we think differently than normal people. So that's what would prompt him to ask such a question.
No, I thought it was, I thought it was really interesting because I'd never considered it. And when I saw the numbers, I thought it was even more interesting. And so.
But it's a false, not, we don't wanna.
For somebody that doesn't have a degree in math, it would appear.
You don't wanna bank everything on that.
Some of this information, I don't think, I usually have this on one page and evidently I've gotta reboot my computer to restart. We had some stuff going on with our, with our print. Through twenty eighteen, juvenile court obviously dominates the number of our admissions. And we're estimating that through the end of calendar year twenty eighteen, we'll have eight hundred kids through juvenile court. A hundred and thirty-one kids through county courts, one through districts and seventeen coming from other counties.
It's great to the point that he gave you all the conclusions, that, that report we released to the board?
Yeah, we're getting really, really close. Only the, the hangup between last Tuesday and now is that Heather was involved in some training. And so they're getting back together now. And they, they're, they're really, really close. Forty-seven percent of our kids show up on new charges, twenty-four percent on unlawful absence under probation. Fifteen percent are on probation. Juvenile court hold nine percent later to appear juvenile court four percent. And just going back to your question here real quick, through these conversations, one of the things that, that actually finally made sense to us, I mean, both us and probation, was we kept reporting on, and we talked about, the kids that have orders for release. We always threw out a number that was much, much smaller than what probation would throw out. And we learned that we actually use the number that, if a kid has an actual release order. I mean, if ever the thing happened right now, the kid's walking out the door. And they use, the number they use is the kids that they are making application for place. For placement, which obviously would be a higher number. So, yeah, that was kind of interesting.
Is that the difference in that release report over there? Or is that?
No, the release report that, that Greg puts out is just those kids that have release orders. But we're adding on a, on a larger report. We're also adding the kids that probation are making applications for currently.
These are the title of applications.
We actually put the probation application, yeah. And then the admissions by, by charges, which we've all seen. Robbery continues to be the number one, ten charges, assault, domestic assault, terroristic threats. I finally, it goes on down the line, but fourteen of the, the offenses that the kids come to us for count for eighty-four percent of admissions for new charges. We obviously continue to have an issue with D M C. We're on track to admit five hundred kids in twenty eighteen, African-American kids. Two hundred and one Caucasian, two hundred and thirteen Hispanic Mexican. And that will be the first time since, this report goes back ten years to twenty oh eight. That'll be the first time that Hispanic slash Mexican population has exceeded the Caucasian population for issues.
What month did that start?
I'm sorry?
What, what month did that start? What do you predict that's?
That the year?
The year, the year.
This year. Based on the information we had to date, that's the way, that's the, that's the way that's going. And we're gonna finish up calendar year twenty eighteen.
Yeah, I guess the first month was last month where we actually had more Hispanics versus.
Well, just interesting deal, that a conversation I was at with the superintendent, they're predicting, I think she said five years from here, Latino students are gonna be.
Surpassed, I think.
Yeah, you know, yes.
So you didn't say be half?
Gonna surpass.
Surpassed, okay.
So that's, that's just a dynamic change that every system may.
I believe, been the King County people that toured this afternoon, they said the Hispanic population, their admissions is now exceeding the white population. Yep, two. Home programs twenty, I think it's twenty-three today. That's our average for this year, this calendar year. The admissions are picking up, which we would expect when school started.
What's our capacity for that?
While you're there, you wanna, you wanna go to this or you wanna do that?
Sure, no, go ahead.
While you're home, so if I'm, I, I pass this out to everybody, you got it. So if I read this right, will C B A not be able to fund your home program? And probation is the only one that can use monitoring?
Well, I mean, we were told to only submit for C B A funding through the end of, through December of this year.
No, and I.
Yeah, that's a different thing.
No, but I just sort of recognize that. They, people are asking me that and I interpreted that. But the question I made to them is that you only be funded half, not just half in the home because the board, I just not ready to use all my. I told them that they wanna look later, but you, but right now, you look like you're out the box for applying.
At the home, because it's, because they're saying probation.
No, I mean, you should just, my thought was telling, I was telling you, right, you should just provide half because they should provide six months funding instead of the whole.
Which we did this, this two years.
Yeah, and you should, and I was telling everybody, you should apply for six months funding.
For the upcoming semester?
But I don't think it's allowed.
No, that's, that's another deal, but I was, I was trying to clear that.
It doesn't read like it does, so I thought we actually got out in front of what was coming down.
No, but if it is, that's, that's what it is.
But the other thing in there talks about the kids getting into court right after because the liberty has been infringed upon to some extent. And our kids do, I mean, they, they're there within twenty-four hours even when intake puts them on the home program. But the interesting thing is they're there and then the attorneys weigh the attention ninety percent of the time.
So what's that remaining number that will have to, that will be, is up there? What is a hundred and fifty-nine thirty?
What, what did we budget for, just for those, those first six months this year for C B A?
Oh geez, I don't recall that, I told my mom, I don't either.
Well, they cut it in half, I'm assuming it's at least six figures, one thirty, twenty, something like that.
Yeah, it, I, we were just under three hundred thousand.
For the whole year?
For the whole year.
So it's the same amount?
Yeah, and there was some other stuff, like, I mean, little stuff.
Yeah, like bus tickets and some other stuff which didn't amount. For the urinalysis.
That could've been a whole lot.
That was less than twelve.
So if I pull, and I don't know what this is, but my, if I pull a group of us together which includes you probation, Renee, I like that I would talk about, how do you use it better to fill the gap? It's just gonna be gone, what, what do they, you fill the gap? Because there's some questions I got anyway in respect to, I wanna get a better understanding from her. This level of kid that, my understanding, I don't, I have to, let me get my stuff exactly right, let me put it out there. There is a, there are a level of kids recommended by the board to go home, but we don't accept them. We won't accept them. And I haven't seen exactly, yeah, I don't know what that is. But, so if I pull together a group, because I like to see, since you can't fund it, we have a little freedom, is there something we create that, that fits the needs a little better? So I'm trying to pull that together so we can get ahead of this one, but I have some.
But this year, I mean, I did what my thought was expected to. We submitted for C B A, but I don't find it for six months. Because we can't have any C B A for, for personnel at all if you want, correct?
Yeah, no, my understanding, and I, and I, somebody asked me, and my understanding was when they cut it in half for six months, it would just be half funded before we pick up the rest which they did. I didn't interpret that letter. And when I talked to the person that was the rep on the board that I put on there, they said, no, that, that wasn't their interpretation. It was like half funding put here on out. Because what I stressed to them was.
I don't think that's right, Catherine, what's that?
No, I mean, I had this conversation with, but, but I'm saying, when I had, I told them, I don't think the board was ready to soak that up. That's another five years or something like that, we already got soaked some. But one of them I talked to said, that's not, that wasn't their interpretation. It was half, I don't know what the letter said. And they interpreted it like that and they didn't, I'm telling them, I told them that it's not like cut out. Because if that would've been it, the board would've been able to accept all of that at once.
Well, the only thing I was aware of was, and Catherine can elaborate, was the, was the Jack getting cut out by.
In home, that was the recommendation of the advisory council was that they, it was essentially a step down in funding from the grant.
For that year.
The recommendation was harsh, half funding for the, the current grant year and then zero grant funding for the subsequent grant year. So stepping down the grant funding and.
Two, two grant cycles.
So that no county agency gets used to C B A for county agencies? That's only for community agencies?
There was no personnel.
For personnel, right, right, yes, thank you for, for personnel, yes. That was the recommendation, I mean, it's the fourth prerogative of how they proceed.
So Brad, does the, your referrals come through probation or do you guys refer kids on the program? Or can?
Uh, we recycle, well, she's always looking at those new admissions and even some of them are down there all and see if they might be eligible, if they can get on the program. We get some from the Jack, probation agency, and some do come through, I think, from the court.
Well, that's what concerns me about this letter is because it says, "Community-based juvenile services aid funding shall not be used for electronic monitoring other than a probation officer placing youth on an alternative to detention and step forth, blah, blah, blah." So that would mean, at least how I'm reading this, is that that, right. So those are the only kids that we would be able to put on there is if a probation officer referred all of our other.
I think you're, you're reading it the way you're reading.
Well, no, that takes, that's taken through, now, I agree with that, that takes care of itself, but.
Could I make our clarification about the Jack referrals? It's not for electronic monitoring.
No, it's for.
The Jack referrals are for the, the tracker services, the truancy tracker services. There's not an ankle bracelet.
So, yeah, I mean, I'll try to pull a group together.
Okay.
Try to figure out what the gap is, it can be used for that more, more fluid.
Well, and to the capacity.
Yeah. But, oh, I guess while we, we on that, since it brings, well, we wanna finish your report and I'll come back to that because that's.
Wait there.
No.
Is that done also? Um, just academic credits are on track to actually be the highest.
Ten years.
That's right. The highest we've seen in ten years in terms of like kids that are, that are, have earned credits at the youth center.
But half the number of students.
Yeah.
Nice, yeah.
And that's just the month by month. I E Ps continue to be an issue, we're forecasting a hundred and fifty-three kids on I E Ps and. And of a hundred and fifty-three, um, a hundred and ten are going to be kids that are returning to us. Mental health contacts are way up, um, certainly kind of exploded when they added the third person, which is a good thing. It's not that the kids' behavior changed, it was just our, our ability to serve more kids increased. And you thought meditation, that's, that's pretty interesting.
Questions? Okay.
Did you have something you wanted to ask first before?
So the, this kind of, so.
Okay.
This, this basically.
Community-based aid application has gone out several times via email and some other, um, aspects. There's been two trainings conducted last Friday and Monday. Uh, the deadline is October twelfth. Catherine, anything else you want to add to the community-based?
Nope, that's, so the process is of all the community applicants and county departments have needed, submit their applications to reach by October twelfth. From there, then begins the county review. The advisory council, chaired by the board, does the first level of the review. They make recommendations to the team and then the community team ultimately makes the recommendations that are submitted in our application to the state, which is then due in the sixth, December. So it's a tight timeline for everyone. But we did it this way last year, so we've got a template to follow.
Thank you. Thursday, October eighteenth, the O Y S prevention work group is working with McMillan and King Science Schools to host resource fairs during their parent-teacher conferences from three P M. to seven P M. at those two schools. And then Friday, October nineteenth, the delicate imbalance convening is taking place. And we'll be sharing a table, resource table with J D A I. Lots of great breakout sessions and speakers. Um, it is through Eventbrite though, and if you haven't registered, you, it may be full.
I got Paul.
Is it full now? Okay, I was really, really close last week, so never mind. Um, let's see, October twenty-second, O Y S is, um, sponsoring the Juvenile Justice Council at Creighton University. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers, for assisting us finding rooms with that. So far, we've got six lived, experienced young adults in the juvenile justice system. And recruitment continues for that. If you have anyone who may be interested in that, please let me know. And then October twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, Douglas County will be sending a, um, supporting all youth, LGBTQ Georgetown Capstone Project to Georgetown University. And we have probation, D C Y C, the Jack, the Juvenile Bench, young adult with lived experience and promiscipity, all comprising the team that will be going out there. And the Capstone right now proposed is about collecting data so we even understand what population we have or do not have in the county. Then we can start developing, um, supports and services and access and those things as we move forward. Thank you. Any questions? Great, thank you.
Great. So on the other business, this is for so you all. Because my interpretation, and the other conversation I had, and I'm just saying, with you two. I, my interpretation was it would be half yearly. And the conversation I had with them was that I don't know if the board is going to suck that up two years in a row because that's not the conversation I had with everybody a year ago to say it's going to pick up half. Now, since you're, by this off, your remainder is about what, two hundred thousand?
I think it was two hundred and fifty-seven.
Okay, now in that pledge, that's small, it's so good.
For this fiscal year, assuming it would be, it's half, so two hundred and fifty-seven thousand was the half.
So that's, so you got about two hundred and fifty that the county pays for that, that would be, would be the remainder to soak up. And I'm just asking you all because in the budget, it's a small number, but then I won't push back anymore. I'm fine with bringing it because my, the conversation I had with them is, do you wait a year? And if Medicaid expansion passes, there's probably more money to soak up. Because I don't know if G A's budget is going to do that, make more money free. So my, my deal with you all is, personally, I was fine with that, but I didn't want to speak for everybody. So I was saying to them, don't send this down the pipeline to the county budget to quit all at once.
Well, that's why they went half.
Yeah, I know, but I thought it was half from here on out, not half one year. I didn't read it like that.
No, it was half, not that it would be the absolute half the next year, but if they were starting with reducing it to half, working to get rid of all the C B A funds funding our county operations.
So I guess the question I got, cause it's four here. Are you all comfortable enough with that? Because the question is if four are uncomfortable with it, basically whatever work they do could get disrupted to make that work. I'm fine with it and I can fight for it to come all in the budget, two hundred thousand is a small piece. I don't know what the assessments are, but I think, you know, for years I've been like, put it off soft money, that's fine, I still feel it. I'm fine with that. I guess I'm asking you all, are you fine with that?
Well, it depends on what the entire total is, but, I mean, like the home program. I have no problem funding that as long as we, we use it up to capacity. I mean, we're, we haven't been using that program to its capacity since when? I mean, I don't know if we ever reached, we were once maybe. But, I mean, that's my point is I'm okay.
We didn't always staff it.
Right, and we didn't staff it and it wasn't twenty-four seven until a few years ago. But, so I think what you need to do, Commissioner Rogers, is have each of those departments still submit to C B A for that half and see what the.
I guess the one left is that, he, by that, by this memo, I'm certain that they can't.
Well, yes, they.
They can, they should because.
They still could because if probation refers to them for that program, they can still be used.
Okay.
But I would have them go ahead and submit, but submit to you what that amount is so that we as a board can look at that as we begin, because it's going to start pretty soon, conversation about our next budgeting cycle, so.
And we haven't even been at the table for the C B A meetings because we thought we were done with our.
Yeah, but you can do, I mean, you can submit what you submit, yeah, it won't be hard to resubmit that for half of.
Then, then I'm going to.
The other half.
I'm, I'm, then I'm going to lay off them because I'm fine with, let me come on. I just didn't, I just want to speak for everybody else, my interpretation.
If that's what it would have been.
The, the committee will decide if it's, they're going to not fund the other half of it all at once or if they're going to start to ratchet it down even more. But it's going to come to where no county department or service is funded.
I just, I just need those things.
Right, no, that's right.
I'm fine with that. Okay. So submit and we'll see what happens.
Do you want the numbers?
Uh huh.
Our number?
Yeah, it's.
You don't have to do it right now.
Look, it's just under eighty-four thousand is what the actual budget was. That was just for half. And that only included, uh, three of our staff people. It did not include our home people that were used for match.
So totally.
It would have been about two hundred and eighteen thousand, but we excluded, uh, the director, Renee, and, uh, someone else.
Renee was just, her salary was just used as a match.
Yes, for the match.
So the actual number is about ninety thousand.
Correct.
Yeah, oh, well, that's.
So what's your actual number?
I think two fifty-seven was the.
Okay, well, it's a hundred thousand less than that, okay. Then maybe do it. All right. Any other? So I'm going to pull this together.
Don't we just land it in the net for the ninety thousand?
Yeah, submit, then we'll do what it is. But I'm going to put this together and see how we, I'm going to remap, remake something. Call it something new, based on the number of what the need is, I'd rather just fund it up with the need. I mean, give you money for what the need, the service need is instead of putting it around. Uh, anybody else? All right, till next, oh, no, no, the update. So you, this, I mentioned to you, you're going to get an email about a meeting set up and I'm asking them to set the meeting up in D C Y C. There's a meeting asked for by unit of city that they wanted to help us with med, medications. We, yeah, and the assessment evaluations. And there was a group that was pulled together with the psychiatrists, unit of C Ds, people that charge.
I asked Karen Cole to step in.
She said, but I'm trying to explain to you what it is. So, and Judge Cato was there, they kind of worked through this to see whether or not it would be accepted. So it's to a point now, Mary Ann, Claire and myself saw it where presented to you all. Now, you, there was a following meeting happened last night to go through the next phase. They're going to invite the people from Heartland to this next meeting. And you made a comment at the board meeting about you had been talking to them and not talking to Patty about that last night. You need to listen to hear this program because Patty's concern is if you all want to make an alteration to their request, that could put the state's antenna up and it's already a fine line. So I would say, hold on that till you hear this because what you hear, then there are probably some resources that can come in to help move this thing across. So that, that's what this means.
So that might be on hold for her?
When it, because I talked to her about that and she, she's saying she made it seem like you all, it wasn't actually new money, but you were adjusting some stuff. She's scared if you start touching that any weight, it might put an antenna up at the state and make them look at that. So she, would she, she be more comfortable just leaving that?
Confident with using the money for us?
Tell me what she said.
The state is just getting very, um, so they're trying to find ways not to pay for stuff, is basically what I'm saying. I mean, that's just, I mean, that's the truth. I mean, they funded county attorneys that do our border mental health and they have found a way not to fund that anymore. And it was a joint partnership between the counties and the region. And, you know, so they came back and said, oh, no, can't do that. So they're, they are continuing, especially if Medicaid expansion goes through, it's going to get ten times worse because they're going to continue to try to grab things that they don't want to have to pay for. So, so still, we're going to still have those conversations. We just have to, we just want to make sure that the program doesn't send antennas down saying, hey, look at us, take this away now. So that, that's what we want to be cautious about.
So once you hear this, I think this will be what you got.
Yeah, it will.
Okay.
Because with, with Dennis, are you being eligible for this C B A?
Nah, I don't think so. That's a good try, though. You know, thinking outside that box, aren't I like?